Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, February 3rd, 2020. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as we, as the community work our way through the winter season, we are again and ever thankful for the support that we enjoy with this outstanding crews of people working for the city of Batavia. Certainly, the public works shines brightly at this moment as they continue to maintain and salt and make all of our roads safe for driving during winter weather. And certainly, we add some thanks for the Batavia Police and Fire Departments for all their good efforts and the many calls that they now have to respond to, given the types of community that we've grown into with the new people and all the traffic and the new development. There's a lot to do. So, we are just thankful that we have such an outstanding crew before us, serving us in such a grand and competent fashion. Tonight, as always, we want to remember those from our community who are sick and infirmed, and ask that a special blessing be showered upon them. And we also tonight want to specifically remember all those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America, and just ask that a special blessing also be showered upon them. We ask for direction and guidance and understanding and vision as we act on the business before us, knowing that each member of the City Council in their own heart and mind is here to do what will be in the very best interest of Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Rosado, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which sustains, on a nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Chanset?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Sorry, Wolf?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Saron?
McFadden?
Here.
Okay, let the record reflect that at the moment, we have thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council present, and I have been advised that the fourteenth one, which is Alderman Beck, is en route. She had some hat things occur and she got slowed down, but she will be here. So, we obviously have the necessary qualm to go ahead and conduct business. So, item four is a reminder to everyone, if you're going to speak to us tonight or the members of the council, please use the microphones that are available to you, because this is all being recorded and will be replayed many times over BATV. Moving then to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on the agenda. Alderman Chanset, do you have anything tonight?
Your Honor, we have none.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving to item five or six then, is the presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Chanset?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. To accept and place on file the Committee of the Whole Minutes from January 7th, 2020. Approvals to January 24th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $964,148.2. The accounts payable check register in the amount of $1,022,705.37. The City Council Minutes from January 21st of 2020. Ordinance 20-8, amending Title VII, Chapter 1, Section 11 of the Municipal Code related to signs and awnings. Resolution 20-03-R, adopting a license agreement for awnings over a public right-of-way. Ordinance 20-09, authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for property located at 1203 to 1233 North Washington Avenue. Ordinance 20-10, annexing territory and amending the zoning map for property located at 1203 to 1233 North Washington Avenue. Resolution 20-07-R, authorization of purchase of a 2020 John Deere 410L combination loader-back hoe for $134,000 from Westside Tractor Sales Company. Resolution 20-09-R, authorization of purchase of a 2020 John Deere 1575 tractor with front mount room and snow blower attachments for $41,432.90 from Buck Brothers Incorporated. Resolution 20-10-R, authorization of the purchase of a 2020 Ford T-150 cargo van for $23,042 from Landmark Ford Inc. Resolution 20-18-R, authorization to purchase a 2020 Peterbilt chassis for $97,675 from JX Peterbilt. Ordinance 20-13, approving a new drug and alcohol policy. Resolution 20-28-R, the 2018 and 2020 IAFF agreement. Resolution 20-13-R, authorizing purchase of water meters. And Resolution 20-14-R, authorizing execution of tax task order number 18 with Engineering Enterprises for professional services related to preliminary engineering of the Holy Cross Forest Main in an amount not to exceed $30,407. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second? Move by Alderman Chanset, second by Alderman Beck for the approval of the consent agenda as presented and read. Any discussion? Any questions? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no-no's, one absent. Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening that wishes to address us? All right, moving to item eight. We are honored tonight to have Margaret Perot, the President and Chief Executive Officer of the Batavia Chamber here. Welcome, Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I want to start by saying thank you to so many of you for joining us at our Inspire Award. I've been talking about it for months. It just passed, January 23rd. It was an excellent event, well-attended. We gave out our Citizen of the Year Award. Mayor gave a great toast to Nan Phillips. We also gave out six Ole Awards at that event, so awarding businesses, a nice gesture to say thank you for operating and improving your business in our town. We gave out a new green Ole Award to Milk Creek Early Education Program, and we gave out the Spirit of Batavia Award to Chip In. So, it was a really terrific night, and we were happy to host it. I want to let you know, we do it every year, so if you weren't able to attend this year, plan on coming next year. We start accepting nominations for the Citizen of the Year in late October, early November, so pay attention this year to people who have impacted our town and made an impression on you that we could nominate next year to be our next Citizen of the Year. New this year, at Inspire, we unveiled our Chamber Scholarship, our Inspire Scholarships, that we're going to give to four seniors at the Batavia High School. One of the scholarships is called Inspiring Women in Business. That one is to encourage female students to major in the business field, because unfortunately, women are still underrepresented in the business field, so we'd like to encourage females to pursue that career. We also have a scholarship titled Inspiring Career and Technical Achievers. This scholarship is for a student interested in a trade or career in manufacturing. We have a scholarship titled Inspiring Contributors to a Batavia Chamber of Commerce, or a Batavia Chamber Business. This is going to go to a student who has worked at a Batavia Chamber for over a year during their high school years. And our last scholarship will go to, it's titled Inspiring Entrepreneurship, and it will go to a student who has entrepreneurial spirit, so that we encourage them to one day open their business back here in Batavia. If you'd like to contribute to any of these scholarships, please contact me at the Chamber. We're still collecting funds to award to these scholarships. You could call me at (630) 879-7134, or email me at margaret@bataviacamber.org. And if you know any students that are qualified for these, would like to apply for these scholarships, send them to our website, bataviacamber.org. We have many upcoming events, and I'd like to encourage you all to attend. Anyone is welcome to our events. You could register for any of our events on our website, bataviacamber.org. Our next event is our Not-for-Profit Forum, which we host the first Wednesday of every month at the Chamber office. It will be February 5th at 8:00 a.m. This is a great forum for not-for-profits to get together, to give each other advice and support each other, network, and collaborate. On Friday, February 7th, we're hosting our Economic Outlook Luncheon and Business Expo. We're partnering with eighteen different chambers, and currently, there's 256 guests attending, so a great attendance at this. The keynote speaker is William Strauss. He's a senior economist with the Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago. It's an expo. The city of Batavia is hosting an expo booth there, so that will be terrific. And it is hosted, it is held at Ashiata Banquets in Daunton's Grove. If you want any more information about that, please contact me. We have our Batavia Women in Business Luncheon coming up on February 11th, Tuesday, February 11th. It will be our presenter, our expert topic presenter is Rachel Kay, and she'll talk about how to create an epic, unforgettable brand. And this luncheon is both, despite the fact that it's put on by the Batavia Women in Business Council, the council is all females, but men and women are encouraged to attend this, attend the event. And like I said, that's Tuesday, February 11th at 11:30. Advanced registration is required for that. BC Square, our Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club is on Wednesday, February 12th at 7:30 a.m. at Comforted and Suites. This is terrific structured networking. You could register in advance for it, or we encourage walk-ins as well. That's a great way to build your brand awareness and build business relationships. On February 12th, the Chamber's hosting the Illinois New Anti-Harassment Discrimination Laws Educational Seminar in partnership with Valley Industrial Association. It will be held at their facility. That will be from 8:00 to 10:00 o'clock on Wednesday, February 12th. Registration is required. On February 13th, on Thursday, at Aqua Viva, we're doing our kickoff informational meeting for our trip to Tuscany. The Chamber is coordinating with a travel agent, a trip to Italy this summer, or not summer, sorry, it's October, so it'll be fall. It'll be a seven-day, beautiful scenic trip to Italy, so if you're interested in that, please join us at our kickoff meeting on February 13th at Aqua Viva at 5:30. We're doing that in conjunction with the St. Charles and Geneva Chambers, so, and it's open not just to Chamber members, but anyone, so spread the word on that. It'll be a great trip. On Wednesday, February 19th, we're hosting our Networking It. It will be held at Portillo's in their side room. It is a great networking event. We're supporting our charity of the month. Moose Charities will be featured. This year, in 2020, our new time for Networking It, that's the name of our event, Networking It, is at 4:30 to 6:30. That's open to anyone, so please come join us. Then, we have a marketing educational seminar. I told you, we had a lot going on. We have a marketing educational seminar called Digital 1.0. It's a lunch and learn. We're hosting it at Valley Industrial on Friday, February 21st. And then, in partnership with State Rep. Kreenavia, we are hosting a Cannabis and a Small Business Employer Seminar, where our legal expert, Thomas Hip, is going to discuss the new state cannabis laws and how it will impact small businesses. And that will be held on Tuesday, February 25th, at the Batavia Library at 5:00 p.m. Everyone's invited to join us at that. There's no charge for that event either. So, thank you for listening to all that. I do encourage you guys to come and spread the word. The Chamber has a lot of great things going on. But now, I would like to introduce our valued member of the Chamber, Dorjath Law Center. Dorjath has been a member of our Chamber for over five years. Their office is located in Batavia, in the same building that the Chamber's located, in the old post office at 106 West Wilson. Dorjath specializes in elder law, and they are superb advocates, advocates, providing services to protect the legal rights and financial resources of senior citizens, people with disabilities, and their families. The Chamber is thankful to have Nancy and Dave Dorjath offering their services to those in need in our community. I now would like to invite Nancy to come up and talk about her business. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Margaret, for having me. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, city officials. I appreciate the time to explain to you who I am and what my business does. So, Margaret told me I had about forty-five minutes? Okay, no, okay. So, I know I have a couple of minutes. It's really hard for me to condense everything in about five to seven minutes, so if I start talking quickly, please forgive me. So, I've been a Batavia resident for about twenty-five years. My husband and I moved here to Batavia to raise our three kids, and we were looking for a community that really we could actively get involved in. And for us, it was vitally important that we had a foundation for our kids. So, we've been involved with the schools, whether it's through preschool, high school, being the room mom, the party mom, whether it's the boosters. My husband was a BYB coach and on the board for over twelve years, coached basketball. So, for us, it was vitally important that we became involved in the community. So, after my last son graduated high school, yes, I have a grandchild, yes, so I have older kids. So, after my son graduated high school, it was the time for me to now open up my practice. And what other place to do it except for Batavia? I found Batavia to be a very unique community. What I love and what we love about this town is it supports its members. And when I opened up my business, the first thing I wanted to do was sign up for the Chamber. And the Chamber, through Hallie and through Margaret, have been instrumental in helping me grow my practice. And for me, it's very important. I teach, I present probably five to ten times a month to the general public, because to me, it's the misconception of what people don't know tends to hurt them. So, for me, I use my background and my family experience to really tell my stories as to why I became involved in what I became in. My husband and I were both from Chicago, multi-generational. We, I was raised with my grandmother, I'm Polish, so she was Bucia. So, Bucia lived in the basement, and when we got married, we did what every Chicago kid did, we moved across the street. So, Bucia would walk across the street every day and babysit my kids while I went to law school. I started pregnant with my first and had all three kids in law school. So, as we moved out to Batavia, I, we needed to make sure there was a place for Bucia. So, there was a first-floor bedroom, first-floor bathroom, and there became a point in time where we couldn't take care of her. She ended up having dementia, and we had to place her in a facility. And we did what we were told, so the facility told us we needed to spend all her money. And once we spent all her money, she would qualify for Medicaid. But no one told us that when she lost her dentures, there was no money to buy her dentures. There was no money for her hearing aids, there's no money for glasses. So, for me, this is what I practice is asset protection planning, that we can protect assets legally, legitimately, and still qualify my clients for Medicaid, because it's about end-of-life human dignity. It's about how do we make sure that our clients have enough money through the rest of their lives to afford those dentures, to afford the hearing aids, and to afford the glasses? Believe it or not, we're blessed to be in the community we're at. We're at Heritage Woods, we have Asbury Gardens at our fingertips. Those are both Medicaid facilities. So, we're very blessed to have this at our hand and try and determine, how do we protect those assets for our seniors? So, elder law really is a different way to look at the law. It's a holistic approach that we take, and it's critical that we find out what's our client's goals. How do we determine what our client needs and how do we need it? Because again, I think elder law, people are like, oh, you know, I'm not that old yet. I have clients in their 40s who have strokes, who have MS, who have debilitating illnesses that are concerned about long-term care. How do we plan for long-term care? I have clients who have been in nursing homes for over five to seven years. Do you know, that's over a half a million dollars to pay for. How do we make sure that our clients and our communities understand they do not have to happen what happened to my grandmother? We don't have to spend it all in order to qualify for Medicaid. And for me, that's critical. It's information is power, and if we can get the information to our clients, it's up to them to make that decision. What do they want to do? But I didn't have that information. My family didn't have the luxury of having someone tell us, here's options you have available. And without that, we were left without my grandmother having teeth for the rest of her life. So, for me, elder law is a very important field of the law. Part of elder law, the foundation of elder law, though, is estate planning. And believe it or not, six out of ten people do not have an estate plan, or they don't have a current estate plan. And to me, that is crazy, because it's things that we need in a crisis. And I'm telling you, my clients are always calling me because they are in a crisis, and our brains don't think the same way if we're in a crisis. I have two reasons, or two, if you could say yes to these two questions, you need estate planning documents. So, are you over 18? And are you breathing? It's pretty simple. Everyone needs these documents. Even our kids going away to college need these documents. As parents, we want to be prepared for if they go away, do we have the necessary documents to get healthcare information about our kids, to maybe bring a lawsuit or access their financials? Or if our spouse gets sick, do we have a power of attorney to access their 401K? Because you know what I get? It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter, because I'm joint with everything with my spouse. It really does matter, because I had a client, I have a couple of clients in Juliette. Husband had a stroke at 62. Wife, they had a great 401K, he did. The wife could not access his 401K. You want to know why? Because he didn't die. He stayed alive, and who's the owner? The husband. So, we literally had to go to court, guardianship court, name the wife, the guardian for the husband, so she could access his 401K. All we could have done is had a power of attorney for property, and that would have prevented that. So, it's critical, no matter if we're 18, 48, or 88, because we need the authority to do certain things. What happens if there's identity theft? Can we access that person's account? My parents were hit by drunk drivers, T-boned in the middle of an intersection. My dad had his last rites. My mom was in the hospital for about four months for a wheelchair for a year after that. In that timeframe, who made sure that their paychecks didn't get stolen, that their social security checks were there, that there wasn't identity theft, that their bills were paid, that when they were in the hospital, their decisions were followed? So, for me, this is everyday life. This is what we want to have happen. We want to be prepared. You know, I'm assuming all of you have car insurance, right? So, you don't look for car insurance right when you get in a car accident, right? We're prepared. No one wants to think of estate planning, but it's similar to insurance. If we get in an accident, my family is prepared for what they need. So, again, it's if you're over the age of 18 and if you're breathing. It's critical, and if I could change how people think about estate planning, that six out of 10 will be lower. Hopefully, it'll be zero out of 10, because I have clients who are in desperate need for certain things. I go to, the reason why I opened up my firm, because I thought people needed more time without the necessary fear of being billed. So, most of my services are flat fee. I want my seniors to feel comfortable calling me and talking about their dogs, or their pets, or their grandkids, not worrying about it. And I actually go to facilities or houses wherever they need for no additional charge. Why? Because every person needs the right to representation. And I truly believe, because of my grandmother, if we would have just had the right representation, we would have not been in that circumstance. And what I found through the Batavia Chamber, through the Batavia Women's Club, through the facilities that we have in our community, this town needs the information. Everyone needs the information. What you do with it is up to you, but not having the information is the crime. So, I'm here just to tell you, you know, I'm, my office is across from the Chamber, I'm at 106 West Wilson, and, and for me, it's, it's, let's at least review, let's at least understand what we're doing. I do not recommend people go online and do this themselves. That is something that I really frown against, because we don't diagnose our own illnesses online either. There's a reason why attorneys are doing what they're doing, because that's our expertise. We know how to prevent, we know what documents should look like. The generic ones we find online, you know, may not do what we need them to do. So, we really do want to be prepared, and it's important to understand what each individual client's goals are, because this isn't cookie cutter, it shouldn't be cookie cutter. Everyone shouldn't have the same documents. Everyone is important, their life story is important, and we want to make sure that we bring forth whatever that story is and honor those stories. So, I'm very privileged to be in this town, to be in this community. We love this community, and, and to have my practice in Batavia, I'm very blessed to be able to do that. So, I want to thank you for your time. You could reach me, I feel like a salesperson now, you could reach me at (630) 761-3600, or at www.getelderlawhelp.com. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them. If not, I could talk to you afterwards.
I just want to thank you for coming down and kind of telling us about what it is you do. I certainly was aware of it. I've had several citizens in town give you commendations for the nice way you've handled matters-
Thank you.
-their family and whatever. So, you've got some people on the street that are out there patting you on the back and saying nice things. So, I think your message is getting out, and I appreciate you coming down and sharing it with the City Council and the viewers on TV and the few we have in the audience.
All right.
Do you have a question, Alderman Chanset?
I just want to make a remark. Working in the baking industry for fifteen years, I see horror stories all the time. What you do is so important.
It is.
I can't tell you the number of times I've had a customer come up to me after someone has passed away and said, "We're fine, we have everything taken care of, here's our power of attorney," not recognizing the power of attorney passes away after the person passes away. And so, so many people have no idea that there's these laws out there meant to protect them, and people are afraid to talk about their debt, they're afraid to talk about death. It's important that you're, that you're able to talk-
Well, and I find myself to be a little different. You know, dying's the easy part, I joke about. It's the living is the tough part. And for me, the powers of attorney are only valid while you're alive. Most estate planning attorneys say, hey, you have your will. Well, you're dead. I'm worried about what happens to you while you're alive. So, the estate planning documents are also valuable, I think even more valuable, while you're alive. Do you have the powers of attorney for healthcare? Do you have the powers of attorney for property? Because while you're alive, that's what we need. And when you pass away, you know, my clients say, I'm kind of dead, it's up to my family to figure out. So, but for me, that's what I'm, that's what I care about. For me, it was more important for my grandmother to have end-of-life human dignity while she was alive than to have that last will when she passed away, if that makes sense.
Anybody else?
Yes, I've had clients use Nancy and utilize her services, and I've gotten great reviews.
Thanks, Mike.
And she does an excellent job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being part of our community and the good things you do.
Thanks.
Okay, moving nine to item number nine, which is Resolution 20-017-R, Consider Gateway Improvement Grant for Energy City Brewing at 917 First Street. New commercial sign. Who's got this one? Alderman Callahan?
Thank you, Your Honor. Back in April of last year, the City Council created the Gateway Improvement Program via funds from an economic development grant. This was the city's way to incentivize property owners and their tenants to improve the physical appearance and commercial viability of commercial and light industrial areas proximate to and along different areas. One of those that is going to be applying is Heidi and David Files with Energy City Brewing. And Anthony, would you like to?
Thank you, Alderman Callahan. So, as you mentioned, Resolution 20-017-R is awarding a Gateway Improvement Program Grant, funds to Energy City Brewing at 917 First Street. I'm very excited to introduce this grant request, as well as have Heidi here, because as we talked about earlier today, it's a lot of exciting things happening in Batavia, and one of those things is bringing in businesses into the community, so that's always exciting. In this packet, you'll find the proposed Resolution 20-017-R awarding a City Gateway Improvement Program Matching Grant for the purposes of providing financial assistance to Energy City Brewing and a purchase and installation of a new street-facing commercial sign at 917 First Street. Heidi Files believes that installing a subject signage will enhance her business visibility and brand awareness. Now, this item did come up at the Cal meeting, January 28th. So, City Council anonymously recommended the approval of the attached Resolution 20-017-R, which was awarding the matching grant to Energy City Brewing, in amount of $506, or 50% of the total project cost, whichever was, is lesser. Now, we have Heidi Files up here today, and I'd like for her to be able to take an opportunity to just give a little information about her business and what she does out in Batavia for those who are viewing. Thank you.
Hello again. So, this is my husband, David. David and I, well, we're married and we have this business together. We had a fun Saturday. A couple of you may have stopped by to check it out. Once a month, right now, we're open for three hours, and eventually, we're going to have a tasting room with limited hours. We've been there for about a year. And we're having a lot of fun, so. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Just make a comment.
Alderman Callahan?
I think this has been a great business project for the both of you. From the minute you first started talking about it and your enthusiasm for it and everything that you've brought in to the community as a result of it. And it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And that's due in no small part to both of your drive and your Batavian-ness that you have here.
Thank you. Oh, we're finally Batavians, true Batavians.
You're Canadians.
We are, we are. But actually, David became an American citizen about 10 years ago. So now we're-
Legit.
We're legitimately American Batavian, so.
It's not bullshitting.
I'd like to, I'd like to say thank you to the Batavia Chamber of Commerce, actually. They've, they were pretty helpful in connecting us with the right people. I think we may have mentioned that last week. But they saw the need for us as really new, young business owners to connect us with people that could help us and help us grow our business. So, yeah, thanks, Margaret.
I certainly would make the comment, given the line I see at your door once a month and the size of that line and how it used to snake down Island Avenue and then up First Street. And now I'm out there at First Street and it's going down Van Nortryke and it's going all over the place. You must be doing something right. And you must have the taste of the best in your, in your product. Because you certainly do have fans and followers who seemingly come from great distances just to acquire your product, so.
That's all, David.
Yeah, one of our mottos is to make beer that's sought after. So we kind of pride ourselves that we bring people from all over Illinois and beyond. Actually, this next Saturday, next first Saturday, which will be in March, we're expecting about 40 people from all over the country coming specifically to enjoy some weekend adventures in Chicago, including a tasting at our brewery. So that should be a good time.
Yeah, I was down here a couple of months ago on the day that you were open and some folks motioned in the door and said they were looking for your place and they couldn't find it. So I told them how to find it and I said, "Well, where are you from?" And they said, "We're from Kent, Illinois." And I said, "Well, that's right by Pearl City, isn't it?" And they said, "How did you know that?" I said, "Well, you don't even want to know that." "I have been there." And they said, "Well, we hear that..." Now, Kent, Illinois is about two hours and 45-minute drive from Batavia. And it's almost at the Mississippi River out there. And so I say, "How did you..." "Well, we've tasted this and we know what this is, so we're coming in here to buy as much as we can buy." So they're coming in here from Kent, Illinois, you're impressing me because I know how far of a trek they came to buy your beer.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Callahan, you want to make a motion?
I move, we approve Resolution 20-017-R awarding a Gateway Improvement Program Grant funds to Energy City Brewing at 917 First Street.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman O'Neal. For the approval of Ordinance 20-017-R for the improvement grant for Energy City Brewing at 917 First Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving then to item 10, which is Ordinance 20-11, Approving a Conditional Use Permit for Video Gaming Establishment Entertainment in a G.C. General Commercial District at Funway, 1335 South River Street as Windmill City Entertainment. Who's got this one?
I do.
Alderman Callahan?
Thank you, Your Honor. As this has been discussed in, I believe, several COWs, the decision for the video gaming at Funway is what is being approved tonight. If anyone has any questions?
Questions? Making a motion?
I move, we approve Ordinance 20-11, approving a conditional use permit for video gaming establishment in the General Commercial District, Funway at 1335 South River Street, Windmill City Entertainment, Inc., applicant.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of Ordinance 20-11. Any further discussion, Alderman O'Neal?
Yeah, just as it comes around and I vote no for this, I want to make it clear that this has no reflection on Mr. Hanson as a business owner. And Funway, I think, is an excellent establishment. It's just my personal belief that I do not want it in the city. So it really wouldn't matter who was bringing this before me.
Alderman Beck?
While I wholeheartedly agree with Mark that I do not want to see this spread into our city and I would really like to push forward a conversation where we talk about some limits or especially when considering the Central Business District, if we can look at capping it as I anticipate the expansion that we're going to see before us. Because I just fear what that will do to future commercial residential office development in our core downtown. On the other hand, I do think Funway will do a good job with this at this point. I feel like my vote is just on whether or not I think Funway will do a good job with this and whether or not the Hanson's are responsible enough to have video gaming. And so I will vote for them. But otherwise, I'm looking to hopefully talk about future, future limits.
Anybody else? No further discussion, Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Ure?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck? Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
So that is...
11-3.
11 yes, 3 no. Motion's approved. Okay, moving then to item number 11, which is Ordinance 20-12, Approving a Conditional Use Permit for Recreational Facility Indoor Large Scale in G.C. Commercial District for Edge Fitness to be located at 301 North Randall Road. Alderman Callahan, you have this one?
I do, thank you. Yes, this is a conditional use permit for Edge Fitness to replace Bye Bye Baby. And while that is unfortunate that a big, I believe it was called a mini anchor, is leaving the strip mall, it's being filled quickly. And that's always a good thing with a, with the Edge Fitness. This would approve the conditional use permit to KIR Batavia 051 at the Wind Point Shopping Center to locate Edge Fitness, a health club at 301 North Randall Road. This will be a very large fitness center at 3,400 square feet plus. Does anyone have any questions?
Alderman Meitzler?
No questions, just a comment. I was very pleased to see them before us at the committee of the whole meeting last week. I know that we're trying to protect the retail space along Randall Road. But I think this is one of those that really will drive some people to go in and out of that area. And hopefully, that'll spill into some of the neighboring retail spaces. So I'm definitely going to support this as I think this would really help boost that general area.
And they will have some sales tax. There's some things that we're selling in there.
And I believe it was, the limit has been set at 25%, but I think, as was stated at the committee of the whole, it's only at 10 to 15 is what this would replace.
Other discussion, Alderman Knop?
I've been told that should I get a membership there, somebody will gladly ride in the car with me and go into Kohl's while I'm in working out. We may see some increased revenue from increased sales at Kohl's as a result of couples going to exercise.
Good point, good point.
And then chicken for afterwards.
And chicken afterwards. Going through the parking lot, I'm not going by chicken.
No further discussion, ask Kirk to call the roll.
I need a motion?
I move, we approve- I move, we approve Ordinance 20-12, approving a conditional use permit for recreational facility, large scale in the General Commercial District, Edge Fitness, 301 North Randall Road, KIR Batavia 051 LLC applicant.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Callahan, second by Alderman Meitzler for the approval of Ordinance 20-12 for the conditional use for the Edge Fitness at 301 North Randall Road. Kirk, call the roll.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Knop?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Okay, moving to 12, the administrators report.
Okay, I've got a lot of good news to share with you tonight. I'm glad that we saw the presentation of the Gateway Improvement Grant funding for Energy City Brewing, because it really relates a lot to the first item I wanted to tell everyone about, which is following up on our successful meeting last year that we had with our local businesses to talk about all of the different aspects that they may interact with the city and the resources available to them. Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce and the city are teaming up for a quarterly series of local business information meetings in 2020. And our first is going to be scheduled for March 18th here at City Hall. And it's to prevent, to present information about the various incentive programs that the city makes available to businesses. We are also going to invite representatives from the Fox Valley Entrepreneurial Center, as well as Wabanci Community College's Small Business Development Center. Both of those are resources that Energy City Brewing used when they were beginning their business. And it has helped them grow their business into the success that it is today. And so we look forward to presenting all of that information to inspire other businesses within our community to either start or grow right here in Batavia. We have a meeting scheduled with Dave Patzelt of Shodin on February 6th to discuss the progress on the One Washington Place Project and timelines. Just earlier today, I saw a post from Oak and Swine that the build-out of the rejuvenation of their business here, just two months into their business. And they are already kind of making improvements to their business. They are going to have a whiskey tasting bar. It's going to be more of a sit-down type of cocktails and barbecue restaurant. And so we're really excited about their redesign. And I believe that they said they're going to reopen this Thursday. We've received an application for an expansion at the Holy Cross Church on Main Street. They are proposing to build a replica chapel that will look similar to the original church building that is now the home of the Park District's Eastside Community Center on Wilson Street. The Park District also donated back to Holy Cross the bell that was part of the church. And so they're going to be able to use this in their new addition. There's a really nice story behind that. The plan commission meeting for February 5th has been canceled. So the next meeting will not be until February 19th. Work is complete on the speculative industrial building on Fabian Parkway and Louis Bork Drive, except for some final landscaping work that they're doing out there. We've actually issued the first interior build-out permit for a future tenant there. And the first two permits for the Water Tower Crossing development on the Wilson Spewler parcel, those parcels that had been purchased by Habitat for Humanity to build four separate residences. The permits have been submitted and are under review by staff. Final engineering plans need to be revised. And then we'll be issuing those building permits shortly. And the fire department met with State Representative Dan Ugassee on issues in the fire service. And our, as well, our fire department is staying up to date on developments on the coronavirus as that information comes to us through both the King County Health Department, the Illinois Department of Public Health, as well as the CDC. And then also, our annual financial audit has begun. And work will continue on that through June. All members of city council should have received a letter from the auditors asking you to complete a questionnaire and return that directly to the auditors. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the committee reports. Government Services, Alderman Chanset?
We have a few things tomorrow night. One is a consideration of a permanent on-street parking permit by a resident off Houston Street. We're going to be reviewing, approving an extension for the employment agreement with John Dillon. We're also going to be reviewing liquor code as to allowing sales with live theater. And we're also going to have a discussion regarding amending our liquor code to allow city officials to obtain liquor licenses.
Okay, City Services, Alderman Wolf?
We have two things on the agenda tomorrow night. Discussion of a public school request for a resource officer at Rotolo Middle School. And also, master services agreement with H.R. Green.
Anything else?
Yeah, do we have one more? Task order on a watershed concept plan for Mahoney Creek on the east end of town.
Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
We have two resolutions to discuss tomorrow night, Your Honor. One for a telecommunications franchise agreement and another is a poll attachment licensing agreement.
Community Development, Alderman Chan, Callahan?
There's only one topic, and that's regarding discussion for entryway signs.
Sounds like it's going to be an active meeting tomorrow night. Okay, do we have other business from the council?
I should have brought this up after item 10, but I want to join Alderman Beck in a request for discussion on the gaming to make sure that gets on the, on the books at some point as far as putting a cap. What's that?
Did we call for that previously? We just never really-
We did, yeah.
Well, let's-
Call for it again.
Let's get her done. That was it.
Anybody else have other business? Alderman Callahan?
Just on, March 6th is the second annual Flags and Flannel event for the Flag Day Monument. If you haven't bought your tickets yet.
Did you say March 6th?
Yes.
Want to give any more details about it?
Well, it's my birthday, so if you want to show up.
So is this a big birthday party for you?
Yeah. I'm just using it for that.
It's back down at Abbey Farms already.
It's back down at Abbey Farms. It'll be, a lot of the whiskey sponsoring is going to be done by Whiskey Acres out of DeKalb. So that should be good. If anybody has any items that they would like to donate for the silent auction, you could let me know. And we could put something into the auction list for raising funds.
And the plan is to break ground for the Flag Day Monument here this summer?
Hopefully.
Yeah.
We've raised, I believe, upwards of $500,000. And it's possibly going to take a million. But there's also the, since no tax dollars will go into the maintenance of this, we're trying to establish the perpetuity or the care of it. There is a donor that will be matching dollar for dollar all donations that night to the tune of $50,000. So whatever's raised with ticket sales, auction items, et cetera, brick sales, then that donor is going to match up to $50,000. So we could make up to $100,000 on that alone. And we did very well last year.
It's a very nice event.
And it was very fun.
Anybody else? Alderman Malley?
Yeah, just like to let you know that the first two boardwalk shops are under construction out of the Building Trades Lab. And the others, some of the others will be commencing shortly.
Can we get some pictures? We can see them in construction next time you're out?
Yeah. Will do.
Yeah, actually, one thing, is it next Tuesday? Is the showing about All the Queen's Horses? Is it, do we get, is that here in the chambers or? Okay, thanks.
It's the story of the Dixon.
Yeah.
You know, one, one comment I would make about that is this, the person that that story's all about was in this room, looked at this whole place.